Call this.
Wait, you're in better stronger.
I want to call this July twelfth, twenty twenty-three meeting to order. Sheriff Fairley, you want to say?
I play with the United States of America and two Republican political fans. One next to the underline individual with liberty and justice for all.
Does anybody, Eddie here, anybody for Eddie?
So we don't, evidently, there's nothing to. Nothing from Eddie's office. Okay. Will I make a motion to approve payroll through July fourteenth?
Second.
All in favor? Anybody any question on vouchers and invoices?
Yes. Um, Chia, you on?
He's not on.
Uh, she has somebody in her office that's on. What is it specific?
The Sam's Market Mini Storage. Hundred and eighty dollars. What's that for?
Well, it came out of.
Yeah, he had that meeting with.
Well, it's been.
It's some kind of an online center.
Okay. All right, and. A toilet rental. Two hundred and fifty bucks.
Where's that?
Top of this next page, flip it over. It's triple T sexy.
Park related.
They get in front of the month to get about time in. Should we get your?
While they were repairing.
Something, yeah. This. It don't give me day.
Can we do fishing derby, Mr. Heffington? That possible, let it do fishing derby and stuff like that?
Possibility.
Other side. Was it on the other side? He's asking.
Yeah.
The page, page one is.
Just flip it over.
Didn't have a copy of it.
Oh.
I don't, I don't have, I don't have all of this.
And it's from.
Like I have one page, I have five documents.
Right there, it's behind your agenda.
We're looking for. I don't think it's on. I couldn't find that out.
Those are the only questions I have.
I'll make a motion to approve vouchers and invoices.
Second.
Lady.
Bye.
Minutes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for.
June twenty eighth.
What's the date on that?
June twenty eighth.
June twenty eighth.
Second.
All in favor? Stay.
I move to approve the estate settlement.
Second. Ruth?
Yes.
You're on, girl. The first one is the. NPR agreement, the electrical inspection. It's with NPR electric where they do all the electrical inspections for the building department.
Okay. I had no problems with this. Other than they need to make sure that they bring their. New cards in in September and October. So I'll motion to approve. As long as they bring in their updated cards in September and October.
That's the renewal of their licensing.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
The next one is the building inspector agreement with the town of Fayetteville. And if you, you questions. The mayor and. We just. It's. Every year, yeah. Theirs is the same, didn't change them.
It's the same as previous years.
I feel like we need to build in a, tell me what you guys think. I feel like we need to build in a provision where it's renewable. Uh, at your option every year automatically. Um, because you shouldn't have to do this every year. So. Um, why don't we approve it in concept and we'll get that added and get that language added for you? And then we'll sign it and send it over. That work?
Yeah.
Okay, so I move we approve this agreement with the added clause that it's renewable annually like we did with. Oak Hill at, at the auction of the town of Fayetteville.
Like second, all in favor?
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Harlem?
This is her request to reappoint Karen Lasham.
No, I don't. I move that we approve it.
Second.
All in favor? G S T.
Oh gee, okay.
Yeah.
It's the G S.
Yeah, it's the G S T.
What's? Uh, well, we're not going to renew a contract for a service we haven't been provided for the contract we had in place. I mean, I did, I did my, um. A meeting with them in February and I haven't seen a website since.
I've tried to get in touch with her several times.
Have we reached anybody? I think we need to send a letter to G S T and let him know we, we believe that they're in breach. Um, of their contract with us because they never have provided a website. We've been paying for website. Creation and maintenance for over a year.
I don't have a problem.
So Amy, could you, um, work with Anthony and Dracula or Wes, probably Wes? G S T is our, um. Computer services company and. I can give you any backgrounds you need on it.
When's emails?
Michael, will you write in that clause that we came up with for Oak Hill last time you were here? For the renewability of that contract wherever you think it should go?
Do we have a one?
We'll get, we'll get one. I just was going to have him write it in, then we can type it.
We have a.
Okay.
And file route?
That is Amy C F A.
Okay, so, um, this is for the Sheriff's Masonry, um, project and we had, um. Uh, pre-bid meeting, we had three contractors showed up. We've been on the roof. They said, this is. First thing we thought, um, get a structural engineer to do a report. I did. I'm still wait. They were. Structural engineer was here last week. I'm still waiting on her report. So I wanted to get this on the agenda right now because as soon as she gets the report back to me, I need to publish another RFP. Basically. Findings. And I went to training for next year's C F I grant on Monday and talked to Melissa and there is some. Uh, wiggle room to do a change of scope if we need to bring it down into two pieces because it's going to be more expensive than we initially thought. Um, so they'll work with me on that. So I just need, um, you're okay to publish the new RFP when it's, when I have the rest of the structural engineer and report back.
I mean, we have put in the publication of the new RFP.
Second, all in favor?
Thank you for doing all that.
Well, how's it look? See?
Coal severance budget revision. So to revise it up to its actual amount and I put. Money in capital outlays, general government for that, and oil building. And also for the animal shelter, the, another one of heating units is going on, new safety system. And on, you know, and if we ever get a new bridge, maybe we can fix it right. So we can call gravel across the bridge. That'd be nice.
I make a motion to approve the, uh.
All three of the orders.
Previsions.
Second.
All in favor?
Speaking of animal shelter, we have passed Kevin. With helping them get themselves in order. And he has spent a lot of time on it. And I feel like he should be paid for that time out near coal severance. Allocation.
What's your recommendations?
At whatever his hourly rate is, like, I think it comes to like ten dollars a week because he's spending at least two days a week. But he's spent all weekend looking for volunteers and he knows to volunteer, so. And he's been running the boys' meeting. I mean, he's been. Had not.
Not much of a raise.
It would be a temporary, at his hourly rate for the hours he's been there, is what I think. I think it's like three eighty-four a week while he's on it. But like this week and next week, he won't be there because the Boy Scouts.
So it's only when he's.
Yeah, like I don't think it's, if he's not going down there, then I don't think he should be compensated for it. It's only while he's on it. Is that going to create a management issue for you, like the payroll? Is that going to be a pain to track?
No.
Okay, then, um, I move that we approve. That we compensate, uh, Kevin for the hourly, for the hours. Hourly, based on his hourly wage. He's spending down the animal shelter and just for the record, Kevin used to run an animal shelter. We didn't just randomly pick him. Um, he has background in it.
And he did get cameras set up and say, no.
There you go, Sheriff. We have cameras down there now.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So we'll have access remotely. You know, in case.
Oh, yeah. I like it.
And so on the response letter, South, the solid waste authority, I made some changes and Amy got them. They weren't necessary.
Yeah, I know.
See what they were.
I understand.
Um, they weren't grammar. They were stuffed into a couple of them.
Let's go ahead and approve the letter.
I was going to say motion approved with, uh, Ms. Taylor's, uh, changes, recommended changes. Second, all in favor?
I like it when we're staying on schedule.
I like it when you get ahead as well.
Well, I mean, I guess we can go ahead and Angela.
Oh, he's not there. Okay, that's right. We got, yeah, no, you're right.
I agree. Sorry. Yeah, the only reason I mentioned two commissioners is always on me about trying to, you know, get this stuff done. So.
Is there anything like this ten forty-five? Would that go quickly, Amy?
Possibly. Um, and I forgot. Well, no, because I forgot. No, I think I can do a little bit more.
The lease, we probably don't stop about. Yeah, I think it'll go quick.
Yeah, let's go ahead.
Let's go ahead and talk.
What is it?
The lease.
Oh, the lease.
Yeah. I'll go ahead. We're going to go ahead and talk about the, uh, nine forty-five, right, or ten forty-five?
No.
Nine forty-five. The commission has formed a lease and a partnership with, uh, B S A. Lease the. Visitor Center and use it as a Fed County Visitor Center and Development Office. As a partnership. And we'll have, we're going to sign the lease today. I hope the commission authorizes it. And we should have some more details on funding and a ribbon cutting later on. So anybody in questions, Commissioner, will have to read them?
Well, just, I mean, I guess the comment is that we haven't fully flushed out. Who's going to occupy it and that sort of thing yet. That's why the funding isn't. Um, fully identified because if we're bringing in other agencies like the N R G R D A or, um. Oak Hill and Fayetteville's visitor centers and Fayette County's newer gorge visitor set. We're gonna. You know, see if they can find augment some of the funding, just depending on who has a presence there. Um, but the concept is to use it because it is right there on nineteen. The Hazel Ruby Welcome Center.
And it's to promote Fed County Recreation and Development across the county. To me, this is a big deal. It's, it's, it's an asset for the county.
It's also an example of, of the Boy Scouts. Willingness to cooperate. Um, and give back to the county where in the past, we haven't seen a whole lot of that.
Well, I make a.
We're excited at the press.
I make a motion. Oh, I'm taking it. I make a motion to approve the lease.
I'll second. All in favor?
And the lease fee, by the way, is one dollar a year.
Yeah.
It's nominal. Thank you for that work, Michael.
Right.
Thank you, family. It's, it's fifteen after.
So this is five tables on. And do not, this was a case that, which is sort of pressure. Seven six two, I know you don't need it, but it's seven six two zero. You know, Oak Hill Patterson Road. This is, uh, abandoned dilapidated house. Um, both, there's two property owners, um, they're brothers. One was out of state. He did get served on June second, um, from the local sheriff's office there. And the other gentleman does live in Fayette County and he did get served back at the end of May. Um. He was in a rehabilitation center. I spoke to him two weeks ago. He did call and told me he was going to rehab. Um, I called yesterday to give him the Zoom information. I already told him the date, but I told him that he could do Zoom since he was there. When I spoke to the caseworker. He is discharged. But he is not here today as far as I know. And his brother from out of state never contacted.
Not on Zoom either.
There's a cell phone number on there. I don't recognize.
If you're on Zoom and you're one of the parties to this matter, could you raise your hand? Go ahead and unmute that cell phone number just in case. Okay, we have a cell phone number that ends in one one zero five. If you're one of the parties in this matter, please speak. Okay, that's, that's.
Yeah, I don't think so, but I mean, it's still on the agenda. I did call yesterday, but. He was discharged. He did, was aware of the date. I was just going to email the link yesterday, but.
Could you remind us of the planning commission's recommendation?
No, this is a dilapidate. I'm sorry, I have to put on my dilapidated. This is one where you guys, yes, yeah, sorry, I'm sorry. But yeah, this one is basically, the beautification committee is asking for you guys to, um, do a demo order to have it tool bound. This will.
Okay, well, I move we approve the beautification committee's recommendation and assess the civil penalties for our.
So this one's different. Y'all already done this on this one?
And what do we do?
So on this one, since they're not here, I'm assuming, you know, they've been both been notified. I'm thinking now you actually order it demoed. And then Anthony actually does a demo order so we can get bids to tear it down. You guys have already made that motion. This is the after motion.
Okay, I move that we order the demo of the property at. Seven two, seven six two zero Oak Hill Patterson Road in Scarborough. Per the beautification committee's recommendations and our efforts to notify the parties that.
Second.
Not responded.
All in favor? Aye. I'd also like to thank Oak Hill Fire Department Chief and Assistant Chief. For coming in. They can tell you of the, uh. Multiple fires that they've had to put out this location. And Sheriff Fridley's here for the multiple arrests that have been made out of that. So thank you guys for coming in.
It's a public safety issue for you.
Angela.
Well, I guess we can be.
We can do the brown. About one of the end or we could do four on a.
Okay, I guess we could do both of them between now and nine thirty. Let's go ahead and do, um, we're going to do the ten thirty, the pool RFP. The commission sent out RFPs for some engineering to see if they, what the issues, what was wrong at the Fed County Park with the pool. They come back and gave us some information. On the, uh, issues with the pool. And the commission now is going to put out, um. An RFP for a engineer and architectural work. To, uh, give a design. On the, uh. On some different options on the pool at the park.
And the options they gave us were completely demolished, um, that it could be reconstructed with some specific suggestions or redesigned. So what we plan to do is release the engineering report as a part of the RFP. So whoever bidding on the project. Um, understands, you know, our options as presented to us.
And in RFP. The commission's going to request. A schedule to make sure that the in, architectural work and engineering. And construction is done by Memorial Weekend of twenty twenty-four.
Which we're thinking, but I.
Well.
I hope we can.
Well, my, in my opinion, if you get an engineer and architect and a contract, a sign and agreement, if the RFP goes out and they can do it. That's what should be done. There's no use in waiting another year again.
Oh, no, I agree with you, but.
Yeah.
Try to slow down to figure out what was wrong.
Yeah, and, and hope for, uh, no, not a bad winter, so they can get a lot of work done. Yeah, well, if we start now, good weather. Hopefully, we have enough time to get this all done, fit, finished by Memorial Weekend twenty twenty-four. I make a motion to approve the RFP. Second, all in favor? Brownsville, Ruth, you want to go ahead and do nine forty-five Brownsville or Amy?
That's Amy.
Ten forty-five. Or excuse me, ten forty-five.
That's okay. And it's actually you guys, because I just need you to, um, kind of. Tell me how involved you want to be with making an inventory list of what we want to use this money for. Um. I talked with Matt the other day. Uh, he is actually at a Rivers Conference this morning talking about the Met River Rail Trail where he would, um. Um, be on the call to help us. Um. I asked him about potential uses and let's see. Tom, he mentioned something that you had an idea.
Well, we, we talked about originally about everything on Route sixty as a scenic highway. Uh, but this will cover all the county, anything the county wants, correct? Is that the way it was worded? I believe we changed the wording to cover.
Well, yeah, and that was the project that was originally used for the application. It, they just wanted a placeholder to show that we had. And we're allowed to change that.
So when do we need to come up with the recommendations? I want to start with sixty.
Yeah.
And then if there's anything else.
I mean, as soon as possible, because I've already got a, um, I'm getting ready to do my first, um, drawdown to, um.
I guess we.
Reversment, so we can start making, we can start making our list now.
I would like to have everything on sixty that needs to be done and then from there, I don't know how the other two commissioners feel about it, but that's what I would like to see.
There's also.
To get it going.
Yeah.
And I think we have a lot of.
So.
Information on.
So part of Brownfield, it doesn't have to be dilapidated. Like, there are a couple of businesses. That are good structure. Do you want those added that could be redeveloped?
Yeah.
Maybe something else, okay, not this.
Yeah.
There are some gas stations that may be developed.
And this is all just, our, our grant, this Brownfields grant is just assessment. So this is just testing. So I was thinking, and we're going to have to talk to my project manager to see if we're allowed to use this grant money. With another project that's being funded by grant money, because I was thinking maybe, because we're going to have to do, um. Asbestos testing and phase ones on any of the properties that we tear down if it's going to be redeveloped. With Angela's D E P grants, so we hopefully can use those in conjunction, do the asbestos testing. Matt seems to think that would be a great use. Um, we just have to, um. Uh, double check with my other funding agency and see if there's any, um, conflict. Um, he also said a check, I asked him about the pool before we get ahead of. And doing a phase one on that area. And he said a check for contaminants in the pool area ahead of a new design would make sense. So we could use that. We could do a face in the pool area. Um, there are various things that we can, um, do. Let me just make sure. That's that one. And he had said something about, you had another project that you were talking about. I don't want to. I guess it had to do with trails, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay, so we could go that direction as well.
Okay, yeah.
Um, we've got three hundred and seventy-eight thousand to spend. Um, I'm not one hundred percent sure how much a phase one costs. I think it depends on the site and how involved it gets. And if we have to do a phase two at that point, if they find anything. But, um, their main. Goal is getting anything we test redeveloped for economic development and, um. Obviously, the housing is a big issue in our areas, getting those houses tested so we can get them demolished, hopefully that'll work in conjunction.
Yeah.
And then, uh.
Yeah, there's three stages of funding and grants to get.
Yeah, so this is just assessment. This is not a demo grant, but Angela has a demo grant. From a different funding source, so, yeah.
And we've got most information on sixty, I believe, to go ahead and.
Yeah. That did be crushed here for the last day, but they possibly could be redeveloped. That would be a good way to go ahead and work with the property owner and say, what do you want?
And then we come up with something else besides sixty, just to utilize the money.
Yeah, and I mean, I think if you're going to put out an RFP for the pool, we should probably go ahead and get that. I could have him go ahead and start doing that area.
Okay.
If, if that's okay with you guys.
Yeah.
Okay, when that grant was first received, it would also include Collins. Old Collins High School, Junior High in Oak Hill. Um, but lately, we found out that we had no authorization doing work in Oak Hill. So Region Four actually picked up. The grant for all the work to be done at the old high school, junior high. But then. Uh, I think the city attorney for Oak Hill is also working with the. Uh, Board of Education to try to get the property into the Board of Education's name, so actually some work can be done. Uh, and as of. Two weeks ago. Everything was still in a college's name in Virginia. Instead of the Board of Education. So I'll continue to follow up on that and keep everybody updated as much as I can.
But the good news on that one is Region Four's assessment grant is a year ahead of us in the process, so.
Correct.
They're at a point to actually see some work done on that. So I will go, I'll double check with project manager, um, with the E P A to make sure that we can use that in conjunction with the D E P grant. And if so, then we can use that for your asbestos testing and any phase ones. And then if you all come up with like a big building or something that you. The problem is ownership, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, that we can. Assess for potential economic development.
Memorial Building.
Um, I brought that up to him. He didn't touch on that one. Um, again, it's just testing, we're just testing the, um. The ground around it. So I think any, I don't know, I'll, I'll double check with him again because he didn't answer that one specifically for Memorial Building. He said, yeah, definitely the pool, because I asked that question together. Um, so we'll definitely do the pool too. And I'll readdress that one. Because I don't know if it's like an inborn kind of assessment. I think it's ground.
So we don't have to make a decision. We just.
No, I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah.
When you start moving forward, making an inventory.
Okay, I want to make sure too.
Okay, good. Yeah. And it will look into your, um, trail options.
Okay. Well, we just got a couple more minutes.
While we're waiting, uh, there is a hearing for Armstrong Creek PSD. The hearing's going to be held at Montgomery City Hall instead of the City Hall in, um. Yeah. Golly Bridge. So hey, we'll get moved a little bit. Uh. First, there'll be comments by all of the customers to make sure their concerns are being held. And then the actual hearing. Uh, for the PSD will be later on that day and that'll be on. Um, twenty-first at nine thirty. And I'll take all of the, uh. Those complaints that I have and then are you getting some more turned in?
I have.
Okay.
Well, it's close enough. I believe we can go ahead and start from nine thirty. The, uh. Fire Association bid. That was received last commission meeting, I believe it was. There were some issues. Brought up and, uh, I want Michael, if he would, to come up. And explain some. Some things and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, so, um. The bids were open, um, I think it was June the twenty-eighth. The bids were opened, um, I think it was June the twenty eighth. Um, in this, uh, in a commission meeting scheduled, uh, documented and reported commission meeting. And two bids were received and opened. One was from prime contracting and one was from Dan Hill Construction. Upon opening of the bids, they were initially reviewed by the commission as well as by the prosecuting attorney and myself. And upon an initial review of the bids, there appeared to have been um, an issue with the prime contracting bid insofar as. Um, it did not have a bid bond um, submitted with it, so. Um, the commission tabled uh, this issue, uh, asked me to look into. Research those issues and to um, determine whether prime contracting was in fact. Uh, that bid received was in fact a valid uh, bid. Uh, upon researching it, um. Because this is a public entity requesting um. Uh, construction contract over twenty five thousand dollars, the uh. West Virginia Fairness and Competitive Bidding Act applies West Virginia Code five dash twenty two dash one. And that code um, applies not only to the state, but to all political subdivisions in the state. Political subdivision would be, for example, County Commission. This act um, was passed by the legislature to ensure, as it says, competitive um, bidding. Uh, in the state of West Virginia for government entities, um, in an effort to protect. Uh, and preserve uh, taxpayer dollars and sets forth a pretty. Pretty specific requirements as to what process has to be followed. Um, and ultimately, the goal with this app is to find the lowest qualified responsible bidder. Well, the term lowest qualified responsible bidder is defined specifically in the statute. And the definition of a lowest qualified responsible bidder is uh, someone that has supplied a valid bid bond. Um, or other certainty authorized or approved by the constructing public entity. Um, so uh, from there, just from definitional standpoint. Prime contracting doesn't meet the definition of a lowest qualified responsible bidder, as they didn't submit a valid bid bond. In addition to that, uh, this, this isn't just some definitional requirement. Um, the code specifically requires in a separate section that all bids submitted pursuant to this chapter shall include a valid bid bond. Or other certi as approved by the state of West Virginia or subdivision. Um, in addition uh, to requiring that a valid bid bond be uh, submitted. The code specifically states in fifty five dash twenty two dash two B. That the provisions and requirements of this section, section one of Article twenty two of this chapter. The requirements stated in the advertisements for bids and the requirements on the bid form may not be waived by any public entity. So that means that even if the the commission received a bid that did not have a valid bid bond, and they liked the bid anyway. They are not entitled under the law to waive the requirement that a bid bond be submitted. Um, and then finally, again, to just continue with the emphasis that these are mandatory requirements. West Virginia Code five twenty two one I states that the contracting public entity may not award the contract to a bidder. Which fails to meet the minimum requirements set out in this section. Minimum requirement is the submission of a valid bid bond. And this isn't just some. Um, provision that has no deeper merit to it. If the contracting public entity, such as the County Commission here, would award a contract to an entity that does not meet the requirements. Each individual commissioner and anybody else who is approved or signed off on the contract. Would be subject to misdemeanor prosecution, imprisonment up to one year and five hundred dollar fine or both. So um, these are not meritless requirements or requirements. So the long and short of it is based upon review of the bid documents, based upon the review of the relevant law and statutes. Uh, prime contracting is not a uh, valid, the the bid submitted in this specific instance was not a valid bid. And should not be considered. Um, just as one last uh, housekeeping matter, the West Virginia Code saying provisions. Uh, state that if the government uh, is going to um. Reject a bid for any reason. Um, that the government must uh, prepare a document. Uh, outlining the reasons for rejection of the bid. And some, and place it in the bid file. So pursuant to uh, my task of reviewing. Uh, this and providing a legal opinion, I've drafted a letter to be placed in the bid file. Um, that is, would be subject to public review upon the con- conclusion of this bidding process. Um, it's uh, West Virginia Code five twenty two. Uh, one I makes that such requirement. I will hand this copy to Ruth so that she can place an official copy signed in the bid file. One last thing, um. That I'll just note, uh, for purposes of this discussion and reviewing this. Is that the commission has the right to reject all bids. Uh, and solicit new bids for the project. Um, there's, it's a, that is a discretionary. Uh, function that this commission has. Um, so should the commission. Have whatever belief they have about all of the bids and say, you know, we don't like these bids, they can reject them. And solicit new bids, but that is a discretionary function. Uh, from the commission, and that would be solely up to the commission to decide. That's West Virginia Code five twenty two one E.
What can you mention to me that I think is relevant here too, is that the requirement for the bid bond was addressed in the pre.
Yes, thank you for that reminder. Um, just, just, I, there, one, one issue that was made this slightly more comp-. Not complicated, but just made us want to make sure we crossed our Ts and dotted our Is, is that the RFP. That was submitted for this uh, project did not. Uh, contain a bid bond requirement. Uh, however. The RFP requirements are separate and apart from the statutory requirements. So if an RFP doesn't outline all the statutory requirements, that does not waive and cannot waive the statutory requirement. Under the law. But nonetheless, there was a prebid meeting uh, for this project. Commissioner Luiso has actually contacted me during the meeting, asked me to jump on the Zoom, and I answered some questions regarding. This process. One of the questions was about a bond, and during the prebid meeting, um, it was communicated that a bond. Uh, would be and was a requirement under this uh, type of a government contract. So uh, despite the fact that the RFP didn't expressly state that a bid bond was required, that is. Ultimately irrelevant, because the statute still applies. The bid, the RFP cannot overrule the statute, cannot waive the requirements under the statute. But nonetheless, during the prebid mandatory meeting. Uh, that issue was addressed and communicated uh, during that time period that a bond uh, would be required, so.
Is that in that letter?
You know what? I don't think it is, and I can add that in there, uh, because there. The, as long as this letter makes it in the bid file prior to the, the, the public. Uh, opening or the, the public accessibility of the bids, then that's okay. So I can make that modification to that letter today, and I will email it back up uh, signed and to be placed into the bid. Thank you for that reminder.
And I did have one other issue with. The whole bid process and how it come out, and I think Mr. Eastep and Mr. Crookshank was there, but was y'all both there at the bid? One of the things that was brought up is, is a fire marshal approved the building. I don't know whether y'all remember that or not, but we talked about the fire marshal approving the building prior to the bidding. And I, I asked y'all if anybody could do it, you guys could do it, and and get the fire marshal to look at it and approve it before bidding. And the only, the reason I bring that up is, if the building's built, and then the fire marshal comes in and says. Well, you're adding, yes, you gotta do this. You might as well do it, have a design for it and do it right. What you want to use it for, instead of having problems and issues with the, with the fire marshal.
We've had three businesses in this county that have had that problem, that. You know, went on the word and believed that the planning or the building inspector. Was able to approve the plans, and then they built Secret Sandwich as one of them. That's why it's not open yet. Um, because then the fire marshal came in after the fact and said they needed a sprinkler system because the laws have changed. And so there's just been, we've had that issue with the storage facility and then Tea Time, Jack Miller's business also.
I did bring that, we did talk about that. I know y'all guys remember that. And it hasn't been. So what I, what I went and met with Mr. Eastep the other day. And I asked him if he would have, if anybody had a problem. Go ahead and uh, for the commission putting out a, a bid or RFP for a design. Because that, that way you can get a design in, you get somebody to design it. It should be approved by a marshal. The marshal looks at the plans. Says yes or no. This has to be changed, that has to be changed. No use in trying to build a building, then something needs to be changed. I don't know whether y'all agree with that or not, but I think that's, that's the fair process, what it should be done. Yes, sir.
Uh, I'll refer to Angel on this. The building permits are issued, which would require a building, the rest of that. It's a standard practice on any commercial structure, which a plan there submitted. The state Fire Marshal's Office for review and approval prior to having a problem.
Okay, well.
So that's pretty standard practice, but we're talking about a pretty engineered building here too.
Well, Alan told us in the case of these other things that the, the builders are responsive, but you know, the people. Who are building the building are responsible for going to state fire marshal.
Well, Vernon, well, you didn't have one. We didn't have one. You, you didn't have one, number one. You had no drawing. And Vernon sat back and said in that meeting. I don't know whether Mr. Crookshank and Mr. Easteps remembers this. But there, it, it all depends on what you're going to do with it, changes you're going to make to it. And and what, how many people, the square footage. I mean, the, I mean, I mean, I'm not trying to point anybody out. I'm just saying that there were some issues, I believe, and even Vernon sat back and said. There are stipulations that I don't even know. I mean, do, I mean, I'm not, I don't want to. I think there's, nobody knew whether for sure that the fire marshal would sign off on it or not. And I don't think there was any real realization. I mean, y'all was going to add some seats in there, an office in there. I mean, I'm just going by what was said. I mean, is that?
The fire marshal bases everything off square footage.
But, okay.
Once you get to five thousand square foot or above, then it has to be sprinkled.
On that, we're speaking to in here that we use, I believe, any fire thing has to be sprinkled, which we may want to.
That's, that's a fire station. This is not a fire station.
And that may be a.
Well, I mean, but, but, I mean, I, I don't know. I'm just saying. Oh, well, you do, but, okay, well, what's all the stipulations for every building built?
It, it, it's one depend on. Classrooms, offices, but it all breaks down to square footage. Now, yes, there should be a plan review, and the fire marshal can do that in a week, in building and drawing.
Well, I mean, I asked them guys, I'm not, I'm not pointing anybody out. I don't want, every time I say something, somebody says, actually, I'm trying to point somebody out or pick on somebody. But we, I asked somebody at least have the fire marshal sign off on it. I mean, I said at least before they do the bid on it.
Right.
And that was it. I mean, that was exactly what I said. And if anybody could do it, I said y'all guys could do it.
I will say this, dealing with my new building in Nicholas County. There has been new codes that went into effect July first. That could detour several things.
I mean, right.
That's what's happened.
And that's what I'm trying to tell you, this, there's so many stipulations from what Vernon said. I don't know. I'm going with what Vernon said.
Ask you this, what, what would they use to determine whether it was a fire station? Even, even if it weren't, because I understand you want to assert, you want to have engines there, a couple of engines there. You're probably going to have someplace for people to eat in there. Like, what would distinguish it from one of our fire stations in function? Other than.
Yeah.
It wouldn't get this patched.
Right, it, it's not going to be a full time. I guess, it's more or less going to be the, the storage facility, classroom area. That's pretty much what we've had in mind, the way one.
Is that all you need? I guess, because I'm looking at this eight hundred thousand dollar bid, and I'm wondering. You should be getting everything you want for that eight hundred thousand dollars. And to me, that's just an exorbitant amount of money, um, for a prefab building. And I'm wondering if, if we're shortchanging ourselves by, you know, doing that. I mean, if, if we even. Don't, don't like freak or have a hard time when I say this, but even if we bid something out and it came in a couple hundred thousand more. You got everything you wanted for that spot, like. What would be the harm if you're going to put that kind of investment into a building? Why? I'm just, it just seems like a lot of money.
Holdups right now is a water system. And if we went anything more than five thousand feet or square foot, or we want to make this a fire station. Then you're talking a lot more.
What about, what about two separate buildings? I, I talked to Mr. Crookshank, Mr. Eastep about this the other day.
Right now, it's.
Well, I mean, if it's two separate buildings, and the square footage makes the difference, to what you just said. So you have two separate buildings. You wouldn't have to have a sprinkler system. And I talked to him about it. What I, what I'd like to do is put out a RFP, maybe two different designs. One design says, okay, we're going to make it a full, full-fledged fire uh, uh, department station. Another design put out just going to be a building. And then the, in the one department, it's going to be a fire station, actually see if you can have two, two different buildings in conjunction. One building where actually everybody may be in, the other building is where the fire engines are. I'm not, I don't know nothing about fire, but I'm trying to come up with an idea. To, to try to make, maybe even have that area at one of these days. You might as well have a design if it's going to be a, a full-fledged fire station. Why not design it now? I mean, I need, I mean.
See, right now, we don't have anywhere to go if bad weather happens. We just, our training committee last night picked a date for our Tech County Fire School this fall. And, you know, weather pending, you know.
Is there, let me ask you this. I hate to put anybody on the spot, because I'm always, you know. Is there any station on the other side of the river that could be turned in, that, that had, that you could make a force? A full. Fire station. Right now. It, only, I'm just, I'm talking about with twenty-four hour services. I'm, I'm just throwing this out there. I'm giving you something to think about. I'm talking about across here. I'm talking about not all, I'm talking about other side of the river. It has to be, that's where all this is, Mr. Crookshank. I mean, is there any facility over right now? That can to be turned in? Or has the ability to be a full? Fire station?
Not without renovations to meet new codes.
Okay.
Because it's leaving quarters and so on.
So, so what I'm trying to get at, it, it, if, if, for instance. To, to, to support the other side of the river, like Fedville and Oak Hill, they get majority calls, they. That their majority is supporting. I'm not taking nothing away from anybody when I say this. Why, why not? Go ahead and try to, to. Make something, design something to be able to have uh, uh, the support across the river, like Oak Hill and Fedville gives this side of the river. I'm not taking away from Mount Hope, and I'm not taking away from um, uh. Uh, Luke Creek or none of them, so don't anybody take this personal. I'm just trying to think of. Across the river. Is it, would they be a fire, would they be a place that be centralized? Between, across the river between Montgomery. And Rainell. That could do that. But just throwing that out there, y'all are the firemen, I'm not.
Water issue out there. You don't have a wells or anything.
There was a tank at the bottom of our property that the hydro used to provide. Uh, when the golf course was open and so on, but in order for us to. We have to put a new pump that did the paints, and then we would have run water lines throughout our property. We looked at putting three different hydrants on there, plus run water lines to the bathroom, bathroom area. Um, you're talking a lot on that, just in the water system. Uh, we've contacted West Canadian American Water, because they have a discharge at Kane Branch. And it's that water just runs out on the ground twenty-four seven. We've even contacted them to ask them if we could use that for a valve one, just to fill our tank. Which wouldn't, you know, we'd only fill our tank up maybe three times a year. And they just shot it down right off the bat. But instead, the water just runs down the ditch line, twenty-four seven. And so that, that's a big holdup for the water. We had a meeting, yes. We had a meeting with the uh, company that's in charge of the New Haven Water Lines. Uh, myself and Shannon were there, talked to them. And they were supposed to make a proposal to you all about adding those into that project. But we haven't heard anything from.
Well, I wondered about that because we're, we're hoping these earmarks get passed and those projects will start.
Well, I know, um, Kenny. Yeah, well, Kenny come by the carryout the other day. I, I need to call him. It might be what that's about. He just come by, I think, yesterday. Well, that's what she's.
You said, the law said, uh, bid on or other surety. Did you just come up with other surety?
Could be like a insurance type policy, uh, something along those lines, something, whatever.
Guarantee that.
Guarantee, yeah, some sort of basically money down. Like a money down that you're gonna perform what you're gonna say you're gonna perform. Um, so, but this surety would have, would, would have to have been approved. The form of the surety would have to have been approved by the commission. The, the problem with the prime contracting bid was they had in. Now, according, before, yeah, they had insurance, but that wasn't the type of insurance that we're talking about. That was general liability insurance. I mean, had workers comp insurance. That's not the surety that we're talking about. The surety that we're talking about or the bid bond is. We will perform the work that we're saying that we're going to perform. And if we don't, here's money that you can take from us. Because we didn't perform what we said we were gonna perform. It's, it's a, it's a clause, because again, we're dealing with public contracts and, and what we're worried about is. Uh, not to badmouth contractors, but a contractor saying, yeah, I'll do the job and then they never do the job. And then the public entity has sunk money into it and they're, they're. So a bid bond ensures that. That entity is, is guaranteeing that they're going to do and finish the work as performed. So that's why I, I hate to speak to the legislature, but I, I believe that's why the legislature found it so important to put that in. Well, surety is defined in the, in the law, but the sure, but. The surety that would be applicable here would have to be some form that would be approved by the commission.
Anything that somebody come up, we would have to, we would have, what Mike was saying is the commission would have to, okay. Whatever insurance thing that they brought to us. If they brought us a piece of paper, said, I got ten million dollars in the account, we accept that, we'd probably say no.
Right. But if they said, we'll put this in an escrow type account that you both have control of, that might be the surety that. The commission would accept that. I don't know, but surety, it, the, the best recommendation. And it would just be for the entity to do a bid on. These contractors that bid on government contractors. They, they know the process, they get it done really easy. Um, so it's, it's not, you know.
Cause I, I went back at the bit last year and. There were no bid bonds and I had nobody brought that issue up.
Where the, was the contractor, where it is?
No. But.
So I mean.
I don't, I'm trying to. You know, we've worked through this process three times now. Just wanna look at things that. Prices go up. So we have to ensure when all this is reviewed legally before it goes out.
Right. Well, but just to, to be fair about it, the, the, the issue wasn't on your all's end. The issue was on the contractors that, that didn't submit the bid bond. I mean, that's not your all, so that's, nobody's fault and. I don't know prime contracting's here, but that's, nobody's fault at this table or sitting back there. Uh, that's nobody's fault there. You, you didn't, you know, that's not your fault that they didn't comply with the law. Right? So, uh, that, that would be prime contracting's issue, uh, there that they didn't comply. So, um.
And it did come up at the pre-bid meeting, which is something that made me feel a little better, like they were told that. They needed to do that.
I remember it being discussed.
And it was discussed, it was discussed. Yep, yep. Even, even the fire marshal, I know y'all don't agree with that, but I mean, I think, I think it should be approved to the fire marshal. I mean, I'm probably wrong. But I, I think what you're gonna do with it, I mean, nobody really knows what you're gonna do with it. You just say it's gonna be a building. You're talking about classrooms, how big they are, bathrooms. I mean, I mean.
The building is a bit four thousand square feet, uh, which is under the, the sprinkler, uh, mandatory.
I tell you.
And then plus it would have a two hundred firewall to separate it.
I tell you what I'd like to do. I, I mean, I'm not meaning to interrupt nobody, but I'd like to talk to a fire marshal. I'd like to call a fire marshal. I'd like. I would like, I want to meet with a fire marshal.
But normally any commercial structure, no matter.
Just to discuss something to see who, I just, so my knowledge. I want my knowledge.
No matter what the size of the commercial structure, it has to go through the fire marshal and they have to yay, yay.
Well, he just said it didn't.
It does.
So I mean, he just said it didn't, so I'd like to talk.
Issue we've had.
I want to talk, I want to talk to a fire marshal.
I said, I just said it can have to be sprinkled. Because it's under the square footage.
So what about the type of equipment that's gonna be stored there? Would that be equipment that the fire marshal would say, hey, you need a sprinkler system in there? It probably is good to see that clarification.
What, what the fire marshal told me in a discussion. Last month was that it had the actively, uh, active emergency response with. Why the training center did not fall under.
I, I don't, yeah, I mean, I don't know, like if you keep air tanks there or something like that full time, the fire marshal may say that's highly flammable. Combustible material that you're gonna need a sprinkler system, because that goes bad and you, I, I don't know. I'm not gonna speak to the fire marshal. I don't know the imposers.
Yeah, I'm.
But it would be. Yes, absolutely.
But, but somebody says. It, it's like the turn channels a bit, it means, well, that's what you come down with the year.
Right. So, but, um. That's just, i- if you're gonna build this building and spend eight hundred thousand dollars on it and then you get to the end and the fire marshal says you need sprinkler system. I mean, or the fire marshal says you need X one hundred Z to, it's gonna be a problem. So it probably would be good. For the front, on the front end to get all the departments know.
Well, I mean, I tell you, I, I was wanting to put that RFP out, but I tell you, at this point, I, I, I don't, I, I don't like talking to the fire marshal. If y'all want to come back and put in an RFP. I mean, that's why I talked to y'all the other day about trying to help the situation out. But I, it seems like every trip, every turn I make, I'm, I'm wrong. So, I mean, I'm, I'm at the point where I want to talk to the fire marshal.
Question. That incur additional expense apart, when you're talking about that going up for a design.
I mean, you all said you had a design.
Yeah, we got it.
Okay, take it to the fire marshal. I, I'm, I'm just saying, you, you said you got a design, do you think the fire marshal will approve? Take it to the fire marshal and go from there. I'm gonna talk to fire marshal myself.
The question. I had for the fire marshals, did you approve a? A drawing for a free engineered there, and you have to have the actual.
I think they have to have the actual plans. That's.
So I mean, you got one, so take it to him and see if he'll approve it. I mean, I, I mean, I.
I don't have a bid in front of me, but did Dan submit actual plans or was it?
It, it, I don't know whether it's an actual design plan.
Not exactly like ours. My concern is if they're like, puts up with the difference.
And Mr. Crook. And I think what, in this design, you guys with the designer comes up with way it should be designed. I mean, I, I mean, I think, but I mean, I'm at this point where really, I mean, I, I've tried everything I could and now I just, I guess, I'm just throwing it back to you guys. And let y'all make the suggestions. So, I mean, if you think that design will work, take it to a fire marshal and see if it'll work. I mean, I, I mean, you said it would work. Take it to and see if it works.
Free engineers know these. Uh, plan. Just to stay at point of where the peers go.
Well, I mean, I can't tell you that because I'm not a fire marshal, number one. If the fire marshal says you can use that, then I guess you can use it. I'm not a fire marshal. I mean, if, if somebody were to contact the fire marshal like I requested, we would, we wouldn't probably not be sitting here like this today. I mean, that, I mean, I don't know what else to say. Well, let them come up with it. Well, let them guys come up with it.
I'll check, uh, the fire marshal with what they are.
Okay.
Our, uh, please, our goal length.
Determination. I mean, I think it's what you gotta do, right?
Fayette County are playing the viewers, dang, we're about to say that.
But I figure if anybody could get it done, these guys could get it done because they're fine. They could get it done. I mentioned that in the meeting. If anybody can do it. Before the bid, y'all could probably get it done. Anybody got any question, any more questions? You, Mr. Stone? And John?
I'm just having trouble understanding what, I mean, what the process is. If, if somebody comes in and bids, are we asking them? To bid with an engineering plan?
Well, the problem is the fire, in my opinion, is the fire marshal has to sign off on the design and maybe I'm wrong.
And they do have to, so the other things we had, the plans change. Every time you have to submit it back.
That's right. Yeah.
That's my understanding that the future is our drawing. And then approve that. Get a special proposal, which is not a bid. That you have to submit all those, all those. And have room for each one of them.
Well, if you, if, yeah, if you use what you got here, you said it's fine. If you use what you got here, take to the fire marshal.
But any change has to be approved. They may, they may say it's, any change has to be back.
Right, no, I know what you're talking about. Yeah, I understand it.
It's fine to go through that process.
But in this case, my question is, since, I mean. Dan Hill is the only company that has survived both bids. My question is, would Dan Hill be responsible now if he were awarded the bid? To submit the plans to the fire marshal, you know, the actual plans before he.
Yes, well. Well, I'm gonna tell you where I think it'd be the property owners. I sit right here and said, guys, get this done before it goes to, to bid. I said, go to the fire marshal and ask the fire marshal for approval prior to the bid. I mean, I, I mean, I.
How does the process work with anybody else trying to build a?
So normally, you, I mean, we don't get to a building permit until we have, we've learned, we, until we have something from the fire marshal saying you're good or you're not good. We don't get to a building like that. But in other counties that are required building permits, that's at the. Due diligence of the property owner to make sure they follow that because the fire marshal can stop opening a building if they don't. So timeframe, that's up to you guys and when you want to approve.
But in this case, we would require a building permit for this building, right?
Yes, I mean, you know, if building permit would be required, I would think to go ahead. Somebody's having to pay you, go ahead and have whatever, make sure it doesn't have to be sprinkled. Because not that is a big cost. Make sure that they're okay with the plan they want before you. Have a contractor start building, but that's my personal opinion to have, fire marshal okay with it before it goes out. So you know what you're looking.
Well, should we postpone it to the next meeting to allow them to consult the fire marshal? And then postpone the decision on whether to award the contract?
I don't have a problem.
Is that okay? Okay, I move that we postpone this matter. When is the next meeting, somebody?
Twenty-sixth.
The twenty-sixth of July.
Second, on favor, uh, motion to adjourn.
Second.